That clock's off. We will open the meeting at 6:30. We will start out with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So they must have been showing movies in here last night. I got popcorn everywhere. Oh, popcorn is part of the presentation? We need one of those presentations. They've set the bar high. Tina, I hope you're up to it.
Who brings next?
We will start with roll call.
Winchester.
Here.
Ryan.
Here.
Burton.
Here.
Ruth.
Here.
Callis.
Yes. Before I entertain a motion to approve the agenda, I would like to add the Holly Dickinsons Festival under new business number 11.
Make a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
Support.
Motion by Clerk Winchester, support by Trustee Burton. All in favors, all in favors say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The consent agenda. All items listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine and non-controversial. They do not require discussion by the township board, and it will be approved by one motion. There will be no separate discussion. If discussion is desired on an item, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will automatically be moved to the last item under new business.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Support.
Motion by Burton. Support by Trustee Ruth. Roll call, please.
Winchester.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Burton.
Yes.
Ruth.
Yes.
Callis.
Yes. Motion carries five zero. Next, we come to public hearing. Chair, would you entertain a motion to open into public hearing?
I'd make a motion to open the public hearing for the 2024 Community Development Block Grant application.
Motion by Clerk Winchester, open public hearing for the Community Development Block Grant for 2024. Is there support by Burton? All in favors say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We are now open for public hearing on the Community Development Block Grant application. Does anybody wish to make comment? I have two families here. I don't see anybody moving. I will ask for a motion to close public hearing.
Support. I mean, so moved.
Again, by Winchester, support.
Support.
By Treasurer Ryan. All in favors say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion carries. We will now move on to presentations. We have the Holly Area Youth Assistant and their director. Is that the proper title? Or board president? Board President Tina Alvarado. If you would start out with your name and address for the record.
Yes. Can you hear me? Am I close enough? Am I doing whatever I'm supposed to do?
I watched you last night on the meeting. You hear that loud and clear. You don't hear it in this room. That's why everybody kept saying this mic's not working.
Oh, okay. Tina Alvarado, 17088 Fish Lake Road, Holly. The reason I asked to be on the agenda tonight is actually to thank the township for the support of Holly Area Youth Assistance. Without your support and the support of the school district and the other municipalities that feed into the school district, HIA wouldn't exist. And I see some new members on the board that may not be familiar with youth assistance. And I wanted to let you know that this organization has been in the village of Holly since 1963. Well, Holly Area Schools. And it begun with a circuit, Oakland County Circuit Court Family Division Judge and a West Bloomfield Superintendent. And they were trying to figure out a way how they might help prevent juvenile delinquency. And they got together and they did some hashing around. They decided that, you know what? We could work through the schools. There's 26 school districts within Oakland County. And what the Oakland County would do for a school district that would agree to have youth assistance in it is that they would supply a caseworker. That means they would pay for all the wages of the caseworker. And what the school district had to do was also to support the philosophy, the mission, and to give in-kind support to the youth assistance office. And the municipalities also had to agree to the mission and to support Holly Area Youth Assistance. And Holly Township has been doing that since 1963. Everybody came on board in 1963. So I think that speaks for itself. If a program isn't viable, if it's not working, you don't let it, it doesn't keep running. And I know the county commissioners would not be funding the caseworker. So I'm here just to thank you for your support and let you know some of the wonderful things we've been doing in HIA so far this year. Like I said.
Tina?
What?
If I can interrupt for a moment. Josh, if we switched her from that mic to the one on the end, would that allow people in this room to hear what she has to say?
It does sound better on that. I'm not sure whether it will.
Can you make that switch?
No, I can't.
I need her to come over here. Do you mind making your presentation from here?
What do I have to do?
Just move over to that mic on the end. Mr. Ruth, if you can move here. Yep, there you go. And then, and talk into that.
Now it's okay?
Move it a little closer to you.
Oh, how's that?
Is that better for you? You can hear?
We can hear.
Okay.
Okay. I just know last night, every time somebody would get to the mic, they'd say they couldn't hear, but it's, for some reason, that mic is not connecting to the speakers.
All right. Well, anyways, that's okay. So since a youth assistance office is all about preventing juvenile delinquency, caseworker services are kind of paramount. And since January, Holly Area Schools have realized 72 referrals. Now, when you think that there's only 52 weeks in a year and we've already had 72 referrals, you know that our youth assistance office is very busy. And 14 of those 72 just came in in October. And of those 14 new referrals, three were from the township. But that's not all. So when a referral comes in, the caseworker is going to get in contact with the student's family, the student, and set up a meeting, and a plan of action will be developed for that student. And what's so wonderful is that instead of just being, I'll call it punished, you know, the student is either going to be in-school suspension or out-of-school suspension or expelled, whatever it is, or maybe referred right away to the juvenile system. What's so wonderful is that even though they still have to go through whatever rule they've broken, whatever consequence that might be, suspension, for example, or detention in school or out of school, they now have someone who's going to help the student, help the family, plot out a course of action to change that behavior so that won't happen again. And so that is true discipline. Now, other school districts, if they're outside of Oakland County, like Fenton, Fenton doesn't have this, Grand Blanc doesn't have it, Heartland. So, and I think it's a shame because all they're doing is they're punishing instead of really disciplining and trying to change behavior. And so I'm very, very proud that Holly Area Youth Assistance is a viable entity within the Holly School District. Now, it doesn't add in there. So people will call the office. And so far, since January, the office has handled 103 questions, and they were, they're able to refer out to different agencies or organizations because the call for help doesn't fall under the parameters of Holly Area Youth Assistance. So again, we are helping our community by, you know, somebody's in crisis or they need help and they don't know where to turn. So they might have heard of HIA, they give us a call, and we'll gladly, if we can't meet the needs, then we know organizations and places to refer them to. So again, another great asset for our community. Most programs, besides caseworker, alright, caseworker services isn't based on anything but behavior. The other programs have, all programs have an application, most of which require proof of residency and income. There are a couple that don't require income, such as youth recognition, where we recognize exemplary youth within the Holly School District. But income, I was, we follow the guidelines. So if a family can prove their residency and income, then they're eligible for assistance through Holly Area Youth Assistance. Just to give you an idea, and I thought these income levels were quite high, but that's what the federal government has established. For example, a family of five, if they make $77,000 a year, that household, they're considered low income. A family of four, $71,000, they're considered low income. So I know, it seemed like a lot of money, right?
You're saying that dollar amount or lower?
Yeah.
So if they make $77,000 or less, $71,000 or less.
So that's just low income because when I gave you the five, let's say it's a five-person household, low income is $77,000, very low is $48,000, and extremely low is $29,000. So.
I can't imagine raising three kids on $29,000.
So, you know, we have programs that's musical instruments. So someone wants to be in the band and yet they can't afford an instrument, contact HIA, we've got an instrument, we're going to get that instrument in your hands. And if we don't have it, we'll do our darnedest to find one, and we'll get one for the student. Camp, both overnight and day camps, our scholarships are available. School supplies. At a HIA board meeting, it was brought up by a member that, you know, maybe HIA shouldn't have a school supply program anymore since so many churches and maybe other organizations, you know, are giving out school supplies. And it just so happened that Lobi Khan, who was the assistant to the superintendent, I think two or three years ago, and she was instrumental in starting the health and enrollment fair, she was able to speak up and she said, oh, no, please, please don't stop your school supply program because you, what you do really meets the needs of our students. Ours are just generic. And I said, thank you, Mrs. Khan, because we do take a lot of pride in that. HIA volunteers get a hold of each school, find out what the suggested school supplies are for that particular grade, that school. We get an application. We make sure that student gets those supplies specifically to their grade level and their school. And not only that, again, it's not generic where we simply put a bag, put stuff in a backpack and give it to them. We invite the family in, and we let the student pick out their backpack. This is especially, and we make sure that they are good quality backpacks because poor kids know they're poor. And when you see these middle schoolers and high schoolers picking out Adidas or Nike backpacks and the smiles on their faces and their comments, you're like, Grandma, do you know how much one of these costs? So we do good work. Like I said, poor kids know they're poor. Something that we have unique to in Holly Area, and I think we can be proud of this, is the Jacobson Quinn Toy Project. It's so named because Dick Jacobson, teacher in Holly for many, many years, and also a member of Holly Area Youth Assistance when it first began, and Doug Quinn, caseworker at that time, got together and they developed this idea, said, hey, we don't want any child within the Holly School District to go without at least one gift at Christmas time. So since 1983, guess what? Holly Area Youth Assistance has carried on the Jacobson Quinn Toy Project, and that's underway right now. Probably our biggest program where most money is spent is under the title of skill building, which really is, should be called like scholarship. It provides funds for any of those activities, programs that would be cost prohibitive to a student. So it might be Holly Little League or AYSO Soccer or Pay to Play, but it also goes for such things as driver's training, band camp, children's camp, all those kinds of things. And this really warms my heart. This year, we were able to assist four students in allowing them to have the funds to take their AP tests. It's $100 to take an AP test. So just because someone is not as economically sound, let's say, as some others, doesn't mean that they're not smart. And, oh, that just warmed my heart, say, of course, couldn't write that check fast enough. And also credit recovery, because students find themselves in that kind of a bind in high school sometimes, they didn't, you know, they failed classes and they need to graduate. So again, we're glad to help their family out, our families out like that. This year, a brand-new program, again, because this came from the HIA board discussing things, said, you know, middle schoolers and high schoolers, they're kind of shunned, you know, people kind of dote over the little ones, but middle schoolers and high schoolers kind of get the short end of the stick, and we're wondering about shoes, shoes for these kids. So we talked about it, set up some parameters, and in September, I was able to meet with the administrative staff and council staff of both the middle school and high school and let them know that HIA has a shoe program. They just have to, and very simple application. And we get referrals from counselors, administration, coaches, teachers, anybody. Because when the, when the ad staff and counselors heard that, it's any kind of shoe. Somebody needs soccer shoes, someone needs rush lane shoes, we're not going to limit it. And then when they heard that we're not going to Target or Walmart, but we're either going to go to Famous Footwear or Dunham's, big smiles, big, big smiles. And so far this year, we have met the needs of 15 students, and the 16th student will be met this Saturday at Famous Footwear. Somebody asked me, well, don't they, aren't they embarrassed, or don't they seem kind of, you know, kind of reluctant? No, because, because we treat them with dignity and respect, and the families are so appreciative, and so are the kids. I had a little meltdown because a young man had picked out some shoes and showed them to me, and we had, you know, I told you about parameters? And we thought setting $75 for a pair of shoes would probably fit the ballpark. Shoes were maybe $5 more than that, and I said, oh, I said, these are da-da-da. And he stepped back, he was so embarrassed. I said, you know what? That's fine. You like those shoes, they fit. So I just kind of made up the difference. But again, thank you, thank you, thank you so much for supporting Holly Area Youth Assistance. Like I said, I don't know what other communities do when families and students find themselves in situations, whether they're getting in trouble or they just need a little hand up. Because nobody knows what's going to happen economically to a family. And I'll end with this. This is why I'm really, really happy that that HIA exists. Salutatorians family in Holly this year, I wonder, some hard economic times, and again, you know, the rules, right? The rule at Holly High School, if you don't pay your athletic fees, you cannot walk with your class. Because the athletic director knew that HIA existed, was able to put that parent in contact with HIA, and the salutatorian did walk with their class. So again, thank you, thank you, thank you. We do a lot of good stuff for the kids of Holly and couldn't do without your support. Thank you.
Tina? If I can? Prior to COVID, there was a program, I don't know if they've started it up, Mentor to Mentor? Can you talk about that?
That is something that is near and dear to my heart, and it has not been within the Holly School District since, it's been about eight years. And that's simply because, it's not that there's not a need, we can't get people to be mentors.
I looked into that program a few years back. It's my understanding that they had suspended it during COVID.
Yeah.
Hasn't been brought back.
Yes, yes.
Okay, that's a program where you can sign up, and they've got kids from broken families, for one reason or another, that could use that big brother, that father, that mother image support. You meet with them, what I think it was once a month. Once you get involved, it's kind of up to you what you do. It's all vetted program, but it's, that's a wonderful program.
That is the most important to me, caseworker services, and if you have a mentoring program. Because what's more, what's the most precious thing you can give a child is your time. I myself was a mentor for 12 years until my mentee got to the age where they aged out. But it was a great experience, and all you're, all you're asked to do is give them your time. It is one hour a week, but you can, you know, whatever you want to do. They ask you not to spend money on them. Give them your time. Go on bicycle rides, take them down to watch Holly Little League games, take them to the Dickinsons Festival, walk around town, anything. So I hope to get that started back up. That's on my list.
Yeah. And then the other thing that, your list, you had a whole bunch of stuff. The other thing, HIA started, I think we've been doing it now for three years, the awards program?
The youth recognition?
Yes.
Yes.
That's another very important program.
So this is where young people are nominated, and the nominations can come from anybody in the community, and we're looking for students that are exemplary. It's not about grades, it's not about athleticism, it's about those qualities that are going to, you know, really help that person in their adult life. Such things as overcoming personal challenges, exemplary service to a group, organization, exemplary patriotism or heroism. So, and we've had some really amazing, and you don't know about it unless somebody tells you how wonderful these kids are. We have a deserving dessert, and they get recognition from local, state, and county officials, plus they get a yard sign with their picture on it and media things, and they get their HIA certificate, there's names saying that, you know, they're exemplary student, and on the back is what their nominator had said about them. So it's, it's wonderful.
And that program, I think the beauty of that program is, these are kids that normally wouldn't get recognition because, as you said, their grade point average or their athleticism. Some of the kids we've had, without mentioning names, though, there was a gal during COVID, one of the kids, they couldn't meet anymore. She took over their Cub Scout, Girl Scout, their Girl Scout program, and had Zoom meetings with craft things. She put them all together, had them delivered to the houses, and then they all met on Zoom, and they still got to meet when it was gone. There was another young man that overcame some incredible challenges with his autism because his whole system was turned over with COVID and in the house. And how he overcame that. And it were just kids that helped out in the neighborhood, and kids that are doing things outside the school districts. The one young lady that won the competition and went to California, young entrepreneurs that program that she was in, loved. We've got some kids in this community that are doing some wonderful things, and they normally wouldn't get recognized. And we created that program, we've done it, I think, three years now. And I'm advertising it because, as Tina said, we need people to nominate. Think about it, through the course of the year, if you see somebody that's doing those kinds of things around the community.
You would not expect. Had a 10-year-old girl with her parents and saw a homeless person, and so decided that she wanted to do something, and so she took upon herself to do like a little crafts, and she does her own fundraising, and this has been going on for three years now. And so her parents support her. I mean, she does her own little fundraising stuff, and they go out and they hand out gloves and hats and just different things. Yeah. Got some wonderful people in our community. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we will move on to reports. Trustees, I'll start with Mr. Burton.
Okay, so the planning commission met earlier this month. I guess what I would call it is more of a training slash refresher that we had. We did speak a lot about, you know, the various future plans and the future land use map, things like that, and then I, you know, just really trying to get our vision for what we're looking for as a planning commission. So we went through and did that, and kind of got a refresher on various things, and maybe got some tips and tricks along the way there as well, so that's what I really have in that.
Okay. Mr. Ruth?
Nothing for me.
Treasurer Ryan?
Just winter bills are pretty much set. They'll be going out December 1st. We're just finishing up the audit reports, so those will be ready next month's meeting. And then we're just doing some general file cleanup, you know, getting all our things ready for potential future moving, so getting rid of all the stuff we don't need anymore.
I was gonna say, a lot of purging of old files.
Yeah, we're doing as much as we can.
That it? Clerk Winchester?
Nothing for me.
Any, any news on the election or anything there to talk about? No? Okay. Supervisor, that would be me. So I want to address one thing that happened at the last meeting. We had a resident that came up during public comment and was concerned that she didn't see something on the agenda. And I just wanted to go over that. Mr. Ruth and Clerk Winchester, you've been on the board longer, but perhaps Trustee Burton and our Treasurer Jen Ryan haven't heard this. If you all remember back when we had the Falk Road issue with the dump and so forth, residents had come forward and asked for the township to put up some money for testing the wells. And we thought that was a good idea initially, and we started to look at it, and the attorney raised a red flag. And the concern was, and it was based off of a lawsuit out of Madison, sorry. It was based out of a lawsuit out of Madison Heights back in the 1980s, and because the dump wasn't ours, that it wasn't our area to get involved, that there were legal ramifications to that. And the issue for the, for the agenda is, the items that are on the agenda are supposed to be items that need action. The board has to take some action on them. And in this particular case, it was an announcement from Eagle. And we had put that information out there, we've shared it as a communication when it came in, but there would have been nothing to actually address through that. And we even looked at the possibilities of, it was brought up that maybe we would send out notices to those people on the lake. And the problem with this, and it goes back to that lawsuit that they talked about, if you sent out the notices to 100 residents and you missed one, or you missed, somebody moved and didn't get the mail or whatever, and then that person got sick, all of a sudden, in this crazy day of the courts, we become liable because we didn't bother to notify them when we notified everybody else. So there are times when, even though it sounds like the right idea to go ahead and put it out there, we may announce it as a public service, but we don't put it on the agenda, and we don't take that kind of action because it's not under our jurisdiction. That's part of Eagle, they've put the notice out there. That's why we don't go post science, because then you have the debate of, did you put it in the right spot?
Well, and then you're taking on another.
And you're taking on that project.
Jurisdictions.
Yeah. So I did want to address it because I know we have the two board members. I don't know if you were here at that time when that Falk Road came down. I'm sure you weren't. I wanted to bring that up and explain why sometimes, even though it sounds like a great idea, we step back because we have boundaries within our purview, and that's how those decisions get made. The barn project is moving forward. It may not look like it when you drive by. Mother Nature's been brutal with this rain she keeps bringing. They were up there last week and couldn't get the equipment to move around. You know, one of the things we forget is that farmstead's been there for 100 and some years, and for 100 and some years, we've toiled the soil, and we've torn it up and rolled it over and made it nice and soft so we can plant things, and now all of a sudden we're driving on it, it's not a road. And it's, it's not, you know, it's not an area that's used to being driven on all the time. So the weather has really played havoc, and they're up there digging down to put the foundation in, and when you dig down, the water tables high in that area, and the soil is just not very good for drainage, which is one of the reasons when the PERT tests were done, we didn't pass any of those. So I wanted people to understand the project is going on, it's moving forward. We've had some sunny days, they'll be out there. Interestingly enough, they, they told me, said, to be honest with you, we'll be able to get more done when the ground freezes, and they can move around on it. So they're doing, they're doing what they can as the weather and the ground permits. We will now move on to public comment. Public comment is on agenda items only. Members of the public can address the board, once recognized by the supervisor. Comments are limited to a maximum of three minutes. The board may extend its time by a majority vote. Prior to addressing the board, members of the public shall state their name and address for the record. A second public comment is available after new business for all other comments. Thank you for your cooperation. Is there anyone for public comment? I'm sorry, Mary, come on up.
Mary Blanchard, 3444 Old Creek Drive, Holly, Michigan. And I would just like to speak on support for number six, farmstead barn roof beds. As I stated at the end of last meeting, I believe the farmstead roof on the Holly barn is in need of repair. I also would speak on support of the Wilson grant, but I don't see Sue here. would speak on support of the Wilson grant, but I don't see Sue here, so I'm not sure that's going to be brought up tonight or not. But I would be in support of the township applying for the Wilson grant if it's regarding the property next to the launch that was just put in the summer. And regarding the comments that Supervisor Colless just made, I can appreciate some of that. However, the fact that one family might be at risk of not finding out leaves all the rest of the families at risk of eating contaminated fish. Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment? Okay, we'll move to old business, which we have nothing, and we will go into new business. Public Act 152, opt-out, proposed resolution 2321. Clerk Winchester?
This is our annual opt-out for the, I should have put it in there, for the Healthcare Act, the Public Act 152.
So do we need to amend this resolution?
No.
Oh, it's right here. You said you should have put it in. Put it in.
Put it, I'm sorry, the act. I think I usually print the act.
Oh, gotcha.
So that it would, yeah, it would explain it better.
I was gonna say, because I see it right there. That was it?
That's it.
Chair would entertain a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Clerk Winchester, support. Support by Trustee Ruth. Discussion?
I just want, what is it exactly? Do you, I mean, it says about, we do just do it every year.
Yeah, but it's, well, it's for the healthcare and the way that you distribute the healthcare with the new.
Basically, I think what Public Act 152, it was about employees paying a portion of that.
Oh.
And in the act, it says, if you find your health insurance at a low enough cost that you beat a certain criteria, then your employees don't have to opt in. If they go for a better program that costs more, then they're expected, based on that law, to opt in up to 20%.
Yeah, it's been so long. I mean, I just, it's automatic, so I apologize. I didn't refresh myself.
Okay, well, I remember, I might, but did I cover it pretty close?
Yes.
Yeah. So our healthcare, we have, we have, the healthcare we have available for our employees, we have done, and it all fits within the criteria so that they don't have to pay a portion of it.
Right, okay.
But we have to renew it every year this way. Any other discussion, questions? Mr. Ruth?
I'll say.
I'm never sure if he's thinking or done. Okay. It's a resolution. Can I have a roll call, please?
Ryan?
Yes.
Burton?
Yes.
Ruth?
Yes.
Winchester?
Yes.
Colless?
Yes. Motion carries, five zero. Now, we will move on to Public Act 20, or not Public Act, Proposed Resolution 202322, which is the 2024 CBPG application. That's another Clerk Winchester.
Yes, so this is our annual application. And this year, I was proposing that we would do the remove architectural barriers, which would be for the entrance of the new township hall.
Okay, so is that, can I add to that?
Can you add? Sure.
Okay. So we bought Dawson Tire, and if you put into the property, there are handicap parking spaces, and those dump out to the sidewalk, which matches the parking lot and then works its way up to the building. When you get up to the building, there's a one step. And there's no way anybody with a wheelchair would be able to get into the building by themselves. So at the time, I couldn't understand how that ever got passed the planning commission when we were buying the building. And I called the village and I met with Jeremy Watson. Well, it turns out that if you go around to the door next to the bay doors, you can get in on ground level and roll right into the building and you're fine. It just, once you've gotten out of your car, come up that ramp, the average person wouldn't see the door. It's behind over there. But that was the way they approved it. So what we said when we bought it was the first thing we want to do is add the ramp to the north of that stoop, if you will. And that way, when somebody pulls up, parks handicap and they come up the ramp, you're right there, I think we're going to add a ramp and a rail on there. So that's what you're talking about.
Yes.
Any other questions or discussion?
Since you brought up the purchase of the property there, about two or three meetings ago, we talked about a speed-up lane or a slowdown lane. And you said the speed-up lane do not go in because there wasn't enough room. But I checked the one out here and it's 150 feet long. There's plenty of space to have 150 feet.
So, so we've been working with HRC, Hubbell, Roth and Clark, and we will be extending the de-acceleration lane that's currently in front of Subway.
Right.
Well, actually, it's their acceleration lane that comes toward our building.
Correct.
We will extend that and that will become the de-acceleration lane for our property. We can't add an acceleration lane going east because of the railroad tracks.
But that's what I'm saying is it's 150 feet and it's 300 feet to the railway.
I know. But whatever the railroad, whatever the rules are for the railroad tracks, there's not enough room in there. And that was, that's from HRC.
Okay.
So if you want to, if you want to call him and argue engineer to engineer, that's okay. I'll have John Ballant call you on that. But that's where that came from.
All right.
So any further discussion on Resolution 202322? None appearing. Can I have a roll call vote?
Oh, we need a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry, want that too? Wow, you're fussy. All right. So Ms. Winchester, want to make the motion?
I move to approve the 2024 CBPG application, proposed resolution 2023-22.
And I'll support it, just to make things different. Now give us the roll call. We've already had the discussion.
Burton?
Yes.
Ruth?
Yes.
Winchester?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Colless?
Yes. Motion carries, five zero. Now we move on to proposed resolution 202323, and I'm not stuttering. That is on the planning and zoning fee schedule.
Yep. So the only thing for the body is on the first page, striking out Planning Commission Subcommittee. I'm really not sure what that was, input boards and commissions. And then amending to have escrow fees because a lot of the things that we do now, we have to have professional, you know, some of our consultants look at it. So we need to have that in place for any expenses.
And the escrow fees are where?
Escrow fees on the far right.
Oh, separate column over here. Got it.
Yes, where there wasn't any, like the land divisions. So we'll be revamping some of our policies and procedures and maybe taking on some of the recordings and stuff like that that need to be done so that we're not leaving it with the applicant that doesn't do it. So things like that. And the same with some of the meetings, the ZBA, the cost of the board meeting itself, it fluctuates from year to year if we increase the salaries of the commissions. So it just cleans it up a little bit.
Yeah. We've had, since I've been here in the seven years, we've had multiple land divisions and some combinations. And for the most part, they're pretty simple and we can meet it in a 10-minute meeting. But I'll tell you, we've got some properties over the years that were really divided in strange ways and people come in and want to divide them again. And they get pretty complicated to the point where we're going to have to have some legal help.
Yes.
So that we, we don't want to deny them based on necessarily logic unless we're sure we can defend it. Because there's some pretty, there are some pretty strange parcels in this township.
Some complicated ones coming up. And so we had to look at this.
Yeah. Okay, so Chair would entertain a motion?
Mega motion to approve proposed resolution 2023-23, planning and zoning fee schedule amendment.
Is there support?
Support.
We'll give the tie to the lady. Treasurer Ryan? Okay, motion by Trustee Burton, support by Treasurer Ryan to approve resolution 202023, 202323, the planning and zoning administrative and escrow fees. Any further discussion? None appearing. Roll call.
Ruth?
Yes.
Winchester?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Burton?
Yes.
Colless?
Yes. Motion carries. That will take us to number four, which is support for the Wilson grant, proposed resolution 202324. Karen?
And this is, yep, this is for the property, our Fish Lake property adjacent to the canoe landing. And Sue Julian has offered to write the grant, of course, with the help of the township as well, to get some trails going, hopefully some bathrooms, really whatever we can get to, to help with that project, she's going to apply for. And she needs formal approval, she felt.
Well, yeah, because when you submit the grant, they want to know the townships.
It's on behalf of us, right.
Okay, so again, Chair would entertain a motion to approve?
Motion to approve proposed resolution 2023-24, support for Wilson grant.
Is there support?
Support.
Support by Trustee Ruth. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Winchester?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Burton?
Yes.
Ruth?
Yes.
Colless?
Yes. Motion carries, five zero. Now we move on to number five, polling location change amendment, which is proposed resolution 202325. And again, it goes to the clerk.
So in September, we moved the polling location for elections to the middle school because they're tearing down Carl Richter Community Center. When I spoke to, we met with the Holly Area Schools and we agreed that we would do it for the 2024 election cycle. We filled out the application or, you know, to use the room when it was brought to their attention that the February primary election was during the school year. Steve Lennar had thought that the, he didn't know that there was a difference between presidential primary and the primary, August primary. So he, it never even occurred to him that it would be during the school time. He thought it'd be in August. So basically, they said that we could not do that because the parking, there's nowhere for anybody to park. They use the majority of the parking lot for just their staff. So he just said that that was going to be an impossible thing. So he agreed that we could use the gymnasium. He said the floor might not be there. There will be a floor, but the wood floor might not be there, but that they would accommodate us for the February presidential primary. So we have to move that or, you know, change it so that it's not with that cycle. It'll start in the August primary.
So this resolution is to move the August primary and the general election to Sherman Middle School?
Yes. Well, no, and all.
Subsequent.
Right.
That's why the effective date is 20, is August. Okay. So do we need, did we have a previous resolution approving the whole year?
Yes.
So do we need to have a vote to get rid of that resolution or will this one supersede that?
This will supersede it.
Okay. All right then. Motion to, Chair would entertain a motion to approve?
I move to approve proposed resolution 202325, polling location change amendment.
Support.
Motion by Treasurer Ryan, support by Clerk Winchester, to approve resolution 202325, moving the precinct polling location from Carl Richter Community Center Gymnasium at 300 East Street to the Sherman Middle School, Sherman Campus Gymnasium, which is at 14470 North Holly Road. That is effective beginning the August 24th primary election. The February presidential primary will still be held at Carl Richter.
After Steve talked with you, he called me and said that they were going to do that in high school this year.
No, we had several phone calls. No, because it would cost between $5,000 and $6,000 to notice and then re-notice and when it's already here. So, yeah, yeah. That would be even worse if it's, the whole thing is a nightmare.
Yeah.
Try working and just tell me.
Yeah.
Okay.
I, and the parking here is going to be a little bit of a problem. So it's a slow election. So hopefully, everything will be fine.
All right. Maybe we can work out on the day where they have all their people park on one end and all of what we need parks down at the other side.
Yeah, we could ask that.
All right. Is there any other further discussion on this?
So I'm just wondering, with making that change, is there some way maybe in the winter build, we could include something to say, hey, election will be at this location?
We are going to.
In the winter tax bill.
Yeah.
And just for the public that's at home watching this meeting, I don't want to engage the audience in the middle of our meeting, but that was the Richard Kinnaman, who is the, what's your title?
Director of Community.
Director of Community Engagement for Holly Area Schools and that falls under her purview, so I allow it. If there's no further discussion, I'll have a roll call.
Ryan?
Yes.
Burton?
Yes.
Ruth?
Yes.
Winchester?
Yes.
Colless?
Yes. Motion carries, five, nothing. After watching the village council meeting from home last night, which was the first time I've done that live, I learned a couple of things about what you don't know who's talking when it comes from the audience. And everybody kept complaining that Mike wasn't working and they'd get down here and they'd talk. And we're sitting at home, I kept moving the volume back and forth depending on what was. So just some things that become what we're, next thing on the agenda is the Farmstead Barn Roof Bids. And one of the reasons this has taken so long is it's been tough getting people to bid.
It's crazy.
You can't get bids. You can't get people come out. And when you do get them, they call and say, well, I can come and get you a bid, but I can't even get to you till next fall and I probably have to change the bid by then. It's crazy out there. So, but we do have some bids in front of us. One from TTHP Construction. That's an estimate for the barn roof. Then we have one from Hillman Roofing, which has its bid. TTH bid is $30,800. The one from Hillman Roof is $38,000.
Well, if, but if you add that there is a difference.
I was gonna say noting, go ahead.
Yeah, one I want to make the board aware, and I think you all know that, and if you want me to recuse myself, I will, is that Hillman is my son-in-law. So I just, so that you're aware, if you want me to recuse myself, I will. But he, so, so Hillman's saying that he believes that the wood should be replaced. TTHP, he's, he didn't recommend it, but if in case it was to have to be replaced, it would be 120 sheets at $65 a sheet, which would bring his bid up to $38,600. So there are only like $25 of difference. So I guess it's up to the board if you want to have the cheating done.
So for the public at home, along with these bids, TTH has supplied us with a barn roof that was done over on East Holly Road and a barn roof on Fagan Road. And then Hillman has shown us pictures of, this is one barn. This barn here is huge. Is this one in Holly Township? Is that the one over, off of?
I think, I think it was in Ortonville.
Oh, Ortonville, because I was gonna say.
Somewhere down there, Brandon or, yeah.
I only know of one barn in the township that's that big. So we have a couple, so they've both got experiences doing barns. I will say, in, in relationship to the fact that, that this is Karen's son-in-law, it is Amy, my assistant's husband, and Robert does a lot of small, put out fires for us throughout the course of the year. So, and I've never had a problem with the work he's done, but both of these are township residents, they're both local. Matt Halberstadt is the one that did the whole back wall on the barn. So we've had experience with both of them. So, and the bids are so close that it would almost be fair to put them in a hat and draw names.
You don't need 120 replacement boards, you can only replace what you need.
Right.
You don't add 120 times.
No, he, what he's saying is recommending to re-sheet the whole thing. Because based on the fact that it was moved and.
Yeah, I don't know. You know, you replace it if it's rotten, or you need to replace something.
Right. So, Mr. Burton, you had a question?
Yeah, well, no, I just had a statement. So I kind of, you know, had the same thought process going on with the plywood, and that's what I actually was going to come here to ask your guys' opinion on, if the sheets needed to be done or not. But I did the same math, came up with a $25 difference. So at that point, what set it apart for me is the TTHP, when you look at it, has a two-year workmanship warranty, and this other one, Hillman Roofing, has 20-year. So I don't know, you know, that, that is, after dollars got close, which is what I would have initially valued, I tried to see other values and other things. And again, this one having an 18-year difference of, see, because you see at the bottom of this TTHP, we guarantee our workmanship for two years from date of completion. And if you look at this one, it says 20-year workmanship warranty. So if these boards do in fact need to be replaced, and this amount gets close, I would pay the Hillman Roofing for the 20-year workmanship warranty, as opposed to the two. But again, I'm not familiar enough, I have no construction background, don't know anything about it. So I don't know if that's going to get to the $7,800 in plywood, or if they all need to be replaced, or if you're replacing one, it should be like a car where you replace both brakes. You know, then do you just replace all the boards? Or can you leave existing boards up there, because then you might have structural thing? I don't know. So I was, any expert guidance anybody has on lumber and roofs that may be sitting here would be, would help my decision.
I was going to say, I've not been in a barn to look up, but the one thought I had is if we're going to, if we're going to refurbish that to be an old barn where people have events in the barn, which is our goal.
You're going to want it, it's the.
Well, we're going to want it, A, to be, to be secure. But at the same time, I wonder if replacing boards with plywood loses some of the intrinsic value, or the, what's the word I'm looking for? The nostalgia, the aesthetics, thank you. In the building as what, pardon?
You won't see it.
It'll go over the boards?
It'll go.
Yeah, the shingles will, yeah.
Oh, yeah, but from the inside is what I meant.
Oh.
I'm not talking about the outside, obviously, I was talking about the inside. I didn't know, you know, how much that plays in a difference to seeing boards up there as opposed to modern-day plywood. Just a question I had.
So Steve, it sounded like you had a little advice on boards, maybe?
Well, I just, I've had Matt do ours, and he only replaced what was necessary. In fact, we didn't have very much required. So I would think, unless he's putting a bid in to say it's 120 sheets, and you're going to replace it all, you wouldn't, you'd only replace it if, if you need some. Another question, you only had two responses out of 10. Wow.
Yeah, no, I told you, it's.
It seems like for everything, that's what's going on.
Well, if you remember, we did the RFP for the back of the wall. And TTHP was the only one that put in an RFP. So we went back out for RFP, that time we got a second response, because we literally called each person begging them to, to give us some kind of a bid. And the second time around, months later, the bid for TTHP went up a couple thousand dollars. And the second bid that we got was almost $20,000 more.
Oh geez.
So it just confirmed that the first one was the good one. And I've talked to other township supervisors around the county, everybody's having the same problems. And a lot of the townships, I'll be honest with you, have just stopped doing RFPs, and they're going with the pre-vetted contractors that the county has.
Yep.
The county has that list out that you can use, and they've been pre-vetted, and, and they're just heading that direction because it's all done.
It's so hard, yeah.
Yeah, so.
It's nice if we can keep it local, but.
Okay, so there's two questions at hand. First of all, what are the board's thought on Ms. Winchester recusing herself? That's a question you asked, that's a board decision. What's the board's pleasure?
I think just visually, it might not be a bad idea.
Yeah, I agree.
Can you say that louder?
I said visually, I think that's a good idea.
Okay. Is the board in favor of that?
Yes.
Okay. All right, then the second thing is, the board, I need to know what the board's pleasure is on these two bids, and which way you think we should go. You can make that known by offering up a motion.
This board member wishes he knew more about the boards.
About, oh, about whether or not to replace the boards with the plywood?
Because again, I mean, that's, that's a decision-maker on whether or not these boards are good or not.
Well, we could make a motion to approve a bid and, and be specific about what we want done on boards. We could say only replace what boards are necessary. That would obviously change the price of the bid for one, based on that theory. I think you, you outlined, or outlined the fact that both bids are almost identical. So what you'd be looking at at that point is the two years versus 20 years.
Yeah, right. And I'm thinking, you know, just from a, the standpoint you brought up of the looks inside, if these are truly, you know, boards that are up there, and then you look here and there's plywood, and then over here, there's four boards, and then it's plywood again?
Well, that's why I say in the motion, we can say we prefer to have, if boards need to be replaced, let's replace them with boards.
Yeah, and, you know, at this point, I think I'll just make the motion, because I feel that if we're going to replace one, or however many boards, with these sheets of plywood, that the whole thing needs to be plywood. So again, bring me a $25 difference, and this one having a 20-year workmanship warranty, that's all I'll go with then. So I'll make a motion to approve Hillman Roofing for the Farmstead Barn Roof, Holly Barn.
With, with a mention of boards instead of plywood?
He's already, he already has the, well, I mean, if you, if you wanted it to be boards, I mean, to me, it really doesn't matter, I don't think, you know?
I agree with you, though I'm a spotty.
Yeah, right, right, but he's already replacing them all in this one. That's included in the price, in this, this sheet here, yeah.
Oh, okay. That's your motion?
Yes.
Is, I do. Oh, here it is. Is there support?
Support.
We have motion by Derek Burton with support by Jen Ryan to accept Hillman Roofing bid for $38,575, with the 20-year.
Warranty.
Warranty. Is there any further discussion? Mr. Ruth? I, I never know if he's thinking or if he's done. Okay. Then I need, roll call, please.
Burton?
Yes.
Ruth?
No.
Ryan?
Yes.
Collis?
Yes. Motion carries three one, with clerk Winchester abstaining. Number seven is Holly disposal mining permit.
So really, all four of these aren't really ready. We have some outstanding items for all of them, especially South Flint in particular. So really, this is just permission from the board to, how does they, how does he say it? That this would be preparatory review for the applicant going into the 2024-2025 permit. So like an extension. And then we'll get these things done, and they'll be back probably in March.
I, I noticed this is from Hobo Roth and clerk, but they refer the mining permit plans done by Rowe Professional Services?
That's, yes, that's the applicant's engineer.
That's the applicant who they use, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Do we know, that couple's not here tonight, but do we know what has come of the, the folks up on Laring Road, where it appears as though they've been encroached on their property?
Right, and I have spoke to the attorney about that, and she said really that the mining companies refused. I asked them if they would do a survey. They refused, they put the fence back, they claim that they're not encroaching. I talked to the engineer, he said that they were, but that they had fixed it and moved past it, but we don't have proof. The only way to do that is to have the township pay for a survey. And, and I don't think that we want to do that with taxpayers' money on behalf of, of the, of the resident. That really, it's the resident, I don't know, I, I really don't know how to think about it. If you, if it's the applicant, or that has to prove it.
If it's a civil matter between the homeowner?
If it's a civil matter, I, right, because I, at one point, they were going to do a survey for themselves, which would have helped the whole situation, and we could have determined it by that. They have canceled that, and they've hired an attorney who has FOIA'd the, the permit applications.
Who's they?
The Gillespies.
The, the residents?
The resident, yeah.
Okay. And they have FOIA'd from us?
Mm-hmm.
Information on that?
Recent.
So I guess for me, there's two questions. Number one, I guess I'd have to ask our attorney, do we have, or I could even go to the MTA for this. Do we have, do we have jurisdiction to the point where we could refuse a permit until they fix this for our resident? In other words, if we get involved, do we have the authority to get involved, which would help our resident get some response? Or is it strictly a civil matter?
Well, I have already spoken to Lisa, and she said that we can't force them to provide a survey. It's all based on the consent judgment, we can try to ask them to, to open up the consent judgment. So if you want to have further dialogue with her, maybe we meet with her, the engineer, and come up with a better plan.
Have we talked to Gillespies, have we had a conversation with them? So we don't know if they're moving ahead with civil. I, I just, I guess my issue is, if the Gillespies need the township's help from a standpoint of support, I would hate, let me rephrase it. If our approval would, would hurt the Gillespies because we gave approval, and it looked like we were on the side of the gravel pit, I would hate to cause them a problem because we didn't realize we were doing that. We are aware that the problem exists.
This is true, but then it's like shutting down the Renaissance Festival, you can't, you can't.
Right, but I also don't want to end up on the wrong side of that civil suit if they come after us because we didn't defend them.
Right. Well, that's true, but we don't have that ability to defend them. And they chose not to do the survey, otherwise we would be able to help them.
Yeah. They, when you say they chose, Gillespies over the gravel pit?
Gillespies.
Oh, okay.
Also, the consent judgment has 25 feet versus 150 or 200.
Correct, that, what they're complaining about.
Do the Gillespies know that it's 25 feet?
Yeah, but, but this encroachment, they had the fence, according to them, and I've seen what appear to be survey stakes, they had the fence on the survey line. This encroachment actually took their fence out on the back corner. Because you, when, the, the time I went out there, the fence was like 30 feet down.
So they claimed that they fixed it, the applicant, the mining company, that they fixed it, the fence is back off.
Yeah, and I've not been out there since then, but that's my only concern, I don't know.
And at this point, I, you hesitate, you can't really talk to the resident now, the Gillespies, because there's an attorney involved. So now it's going to have to be attorney to attorney.
Is the, when you say there's an attorney involved, is that lawsuit against us?
Well, I said that, when he, he called to ask what the status of the application was.
He being the attorney?
He being the attorney, sorry, I'm not good at that.
That's all right, just keeping it clear.
He wanted to know the status, I said, well, I said, I have a problem, I said, I need to know whether, no, I, I said, I can talk to you, however, it depends on whether you're suing the township or the mining company, on whether I can give you that information. If it's the township that you're seeking to, to take action against, you'll have to talk to our attorney. Well, that's when he asked me for her information.
So.
But I don't know how, they have to prove that, that there was a takings of their property, and it wasn't the township that did that. So we don't have the ability to force the applicant to provide a survey.
So is this something that has to be done tonight? Can we table this till next month?
Yeah, because that's, that's really what it, it's permissioned for these to be tabled, to go into the 2024-2025, to, to resolve all of these issues.
Okay, good, because if there's anything I've learned over the last month, you and I both, and, and Jen Ryan, dealing with the whole lockdown over the gun issue, and then the other legal matter that we had, the law is weird.
Yes.
All of a sudden, you can threaten me with a gun over the phone, and it, and it's your First Amendment rights. If you're standing in front of me with the gun and you threaten me, then it's a viable threat you can be arrested for. If you call me on the phone and threaten to punch me and knows it's your First Amendment right, if you're standing in front of me and you have the opportunity to do it, then it's a threat. And, and that is just one of many of these little glitches that we found ourselves navigating over this last month, so I am all for tableting this.
Yeah, we really have no action, we can do no action, and then we can work on it at the administrative level and make sure that we get all these things addressed.
Okay, good.
Now, just out of curiosity, and I'm not sure on this, but, you know, with all the stuff that's going on with the state, with mines and all these other things, what, so say that was in place right now, what would that do to what we're doing right now? Like, we would have zero say in that, or would we get the override of the exist, because they're in existing?
I think it's because they're under consent judgment that they, that we would still have jurisdiction.
Okay.
However, there is question, I do have a question, because the South Flint, to make it even more complicated, they purchased Middleton Mining, which is a completely separate consent judgment. And I see that the, the new guy for HRC is saying that they need special land use, so I don't know if he's aware of the other.
Consent?
Consent, I, I was sure that they had it.
The other question I was going to ask you, as you may have mentioned about the four gravel mines, but we only have three on here.
Oh, because the, yes, it's usually four, Green Thumb is purchasing Tri-City, they didn't apply this year.
Oh, okay.
Thank you. So just no action is fine, I just wanted to bring it to the board and.
Okay, well, this has been looming for quite some time.
Making sure that you, yeah, it has been, it's been.
I have a problem with the reclamation fee.
And that we can't do anything about either, we had that reviewed in depth in 2011. Because it's not even anywhere close to what it would cost.
I don't argue that we built any of that.
Well, and then Holly Disposal, they can't meet any of the, any of their, their items, most of it. You can see that because it's now the, the ORV part.
Ah, right.
So we have to address that maybe in a different way, somehow legally, and go into a real quick consent judgment.
Oh, half, half of it's the ORV part, right, okay.
But they're almost done mining.
My, my question is just on the timelines. What, I don't know how the, like, it sounds like it's calendar year, or is it, or you said 24, 25?
It's May, yeah, it's usually May 3rd, yeah.
Oh, okay, so there's still a while.
There is.
And they'll be currently actively mining that as time goes on?
Yes.
Yep. Okay. Are we all good?
Now, the, the only other thing I want to say that was kind of weird that I noticed in all of these, is every single one of these had their acre drawn.
Yeah, isn't that strange?
Yeah, so maybe that's how we. Yeah, so maybe that's how we got into that issue of Laring Road, is their acreages are off.
Why didn't they just, why all of a sudden, the first year, they've been doing these for, for decades?
Yeah, I found that interesting.
We had a new guy too, though. So I know Jamie, Jamie and John signed off, but it was, it was somebody else in the office that's fairly new that was doing the reviews.
And none of them claimed less, they all claimed they had more.
Yeah.
Go figure on that.
Okay, so items on the agenda, item 78 and 9, for now will be no action taken. And they will now show up in the future under old business. Okay? Just for the secretaries, recording secretaries benefit. All right, number 10, appointments, three Construction Board of Appeals members. So I've been the township supervisor since November of 2016 and we have never had to use our Board of Construction Committee for an appeal. We have a situation in the township where we don't know if it's going to go there, but the possibility is there. And when I brought that up to Clerk Winchester, we looked and we hadn't renewed the names that are on that committee. One of them was Doug Henderson, who has passed away. So that name needs to be replaced. So we do, however, have Brad Stillwell on this committee, along with Zach Morris on the committee. And then the third name is Stu, hang on here. Got his building license here. This was a name, a couple of names that were referred to me through Curtain Lumber, because I didn't.
Yeah, he's a good contractor.
Stu Hopper?
Yep, he's very good.
So I called him, I talked to him, he was willing to serve if and when we would need him. He does have a current building license. So I have three names, we can make motions on each of the names individually, which is probably the way we should do it. The first one would be Brad Stillwell. These two were on the committee before.
And just for a note, they, these will come back in December for another three-year term.
Yeah, but we needed to do it now in case we get this application.
In case we need it, yes.
So Brad Stillwell is one. Zach Morris. For those of you that don't know Zach, he is the one that just built the three-story apartment, or redid the three-story apartment building in between Red Devil and the other three-story, the other only three-story building we have in town, which is out in the corner opposite the party store. And then the fourth name, or the third name then would be Stu Hopper.
I would move to approve Zach Morris for the Construction Board of Appeals, term ending 12/31/23.
Support?
Support by Trustee Burton. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero. We'll go on to Brad Stillwell.
Make a motion to approve Brad Stillwell for a seat on the Construction Board of Appeals, term ending 12/31/23.
Is there support?
Support.
Support by Treasurer Ryan. Any further discussion?
No financial obligation to these guys unless there's a meeting?
If there's a meeting, they're paid $95. And like I said, we've, actually Karen was telling me, she doesn't think we've had one since she's been here.
Yeah.
No, I know we haven't, yeah.
I know I talked to Bob De Palma about it earlier today, I had a couple of questions. And he's been supervisor for 24 years and he's had one. And he said it was about 15 years ago. So just for the public, the Board, the Construction Board of Appeals, if somebody's got a building permit and they disagree with the building inspector, this is where they can go before they have to go to civil court. And typically, any issues get resolved in-house. But I'm not sure this one's going to go that way. So we started looking at this and wanted to make sure we were ready. So we have a motion to approve Brad Stillwell, ending in December of 31, or December 31 of 2023. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero. And then we have Stu Hopper, which is the new name to replace Doug Henderson. That will go through December of this current year, December 31, 2023. Motion, I'll make the motion to, for the appointment. Is there support?
Support.
I got support by, I'll give it to Ruth, but Mr. Burton, you were there too. Any further discussion on this one? None appearing, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion carries. So that takes care of that. Now, I amended the budget to put the Dickens Festival on the agenda. As you all know, we've discussed already the fact that the school is moving forward with their project. The voters in 2022 decided that they would approve a millage for a new middle school and that is underway. We have new tennis courts out here. They're already starting to make a move to build the new trade center. In the meantime, things have escalated to the point where they're going to start tearing Carl Richter down. Originally, they thought everything was going to, everybody had to be out in the summer of 2025 at the end of the school year and they'd all move to the Sherman Middle School. Well, as their process has moved along, they have asbestos mitigation that they have to start working on in this building. And it's my understanding that during the Christmas break, they're going to start in the gym of this building. And notices were sent out to the occupants of this building, which include Hyatt, the Veterans Center, the Chamber of Commerce, the WIC program, and the Village of Holly. That they, and including the, the school district's own administration. They all have to be out of this building by June of 2024. They moved that up an entire year. And then some of them, the downward trickle, the Dickens Festival got a letter a week ago that we've been using the old Cyclone Park building for the last 10 years to store stuff. We now have to be out by the 23rd of this month, because they're going to start on that building. I got that letter in the mail at my house. They will be taking a lot of the props out of the building for the festival itself and moving them downtown, but we will not be allowed to put them back in the building. So everybody's scrambling for space and as you know, there isn't a lot of space out there. One of the other problems we have with the Dickens Festival right now is the fact that we have always used an empty store in town somewhere for a warming center for the volunteers. About six years ago, I think it was 2017, we were in a situation where every space in town was full. And we used the upstairs of the Township Hall for the warming center. And I had mentioned we were going to do that and each weekend we did that. That warming center is always manned by a couple of adults. The kids can come in, we have a couple of crock pots, they can get some chili or mac and cheese or something to warm up and do some costume changing. And after the festival was over, Treasurer Mark Freeman had the attorney write me up because I broke policy and procedure, I didn't have board approval. And I was new at the time, I didn't know I had to have that.
It's in our policies and procedures that no boards, with the exception of the Township Boards and Commissions, yeah.
Yeah, and so I didn't know that. So I'm coming in front of you tonight, I know there's some people from the Dickens Festival here. We find ourselves in a position again this year with nothing empty in the Village of Holly. There's no empty store, there's no empty space, and we're trying to find a place for a warming center. That, we would only need to use the front part of the building, which is currently empty. And it would be manned by adults, which are typically parents to the kids, and they are all vetted through the Holly Police Department. As the committee, we're looking for a warming space. At the same time, well, let's deal with that one first and see what the board says. Obviously, I'm the township supervisor, but I'm also the director of the Dickens Festival. So I do have a board member that's here tonight, a couple of them that wanted to speak on that topic.
Josh Murphy, 103 Bad Valley, speaking on behalf of the Dickens Festival. We are requesting to use the second story of Township Hall, the current Township Hall, right?
The front.
The front. For the warming center for all of our volunteers. We figure, I've spoken with Angie, we figure about 20 people max at a time. It's mostly kids and the parents and it's always manned by, like you said, the parents or something. So that's what we, we're desperately in need of warming center, because they're out there all day long for three weeks at a time.
This, this is the 50th anniversary of the Dickens Festival. Now, when we used it six years ago, there were no problems, everything was clean, we cleaned it all up. The only problem was I didn't get board approval first. So I brought it to the board.
But you said front, you said second floor?
Yeah.
No, the front of the second floor, because the back of the floor, where we used to have the board meeting, we have the building department there. We can cordon that off so that nobody goes there.
Like, the bathrooms will be used for changing and stuff like that, but yeah.
But we can divide all that off so that nobody goes back there.
Yeah.
So is that then where the old, like, chamber table used to be, or are we talking?
No, it's the front.
No, it's the other side.
Okay, the other side.
When you go through the door, you would turn left.
Saginaw Street.
Saginaw Street.
And, I mean, it's been a while since I've been up there, but my only concern then becomes that, wasn't there like an opening there or something?
That's changed up.
Okay.
Yep, that's, you're talking about for the, is it called a parapet? The round, the little round room?
Yeah.
And the insurance, Dickens Festival is a nonprofit organization and we have insurance. And we would be able to produce an insurance policy that would hold the township, would include the township's name on it. We already have to do that for the village. Yeah, we have to do that for the village and we have to do it for the state of Michigan, because we have the liquor license for the festival itself.
Okay.
I have a problem, just because we made that policy and if we're going against a policy, then, then what? Then the next nonprofit can do the same thing and then when do we stop? So we either have the policy or we don't have the policy. And then about cleaning the bathrooms and what about the, you know, the cleaning of the stairs from all the mud and all that from the, I mean, there's. And the heat as well, and so it's costing, it's going to cost the township money, I'm just saying. And I think that was one of the reasons why we didn't have that used by outside boards.
So, so the Dickens Festival would, would take care of the cleaning and take care of that problem? The, you had two questions, I'm turning around to the other ones. Oh, in, in regards to we have the policy, and you're right, we do have the policy. We also waived that policy when we had the Michigan Historic Preservation Conference had their VIP party up there and we waived that for them.
I don't think we did as a board.
Yeah, that came before, that had to come before the board, because we had to approve the use of alcohol.
Oh, okay.
For that. And that party had 90 people in it. So.
We, and we, Angie and I talked about this and it, we figured a maximum of 20 people at a time are up there, so.
Yeah, it's, it's rare that there's that many.
Yeah, there's a lot of kids, but there's all their parents are there.
Yep, so we're asking the board's permission to do that?
Yeah.
I, I need to hear the board's pleasure, I'm, I can't drive that because I'm the director of the festival, it's the 50th anniversary.
So they didn't care the cleaning, everything?
Yep.
So are you looking for a motion at this point?
Yes.
Or are you just looking for input?
Well, either or.
Okay, I mean, I'm, I'm fine with it, I mean, these are Holly families, Holly kids. If they're going to be cold, you know, I don't want my kid being out there volunteering getting cold in a while. And that's just where I'm at.
Okay, is that a motion?
Yeah, so let me see here, so I'll make a motion that Dickens Festival volunteers may use the upstairs front of the second story for their warming center and will be responsible for cleaning. Do we want to do that every, every weekend, or do we want to do that just at the end?
Well, it's, the cleaning's at the end.
Okay.
Yeah, we will be responsible, right?
Right.
Right.
And that's, that's through?
December 10th is the last day.
Yeah, so it would be through December 10th?
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Is there support?
Support.
Support by Treasurer Ryan? And you didn't put it in your motion, but we will include the insurance policy.
Okay. Very good.
Do a roll call, please.
Burton?
Yes.
Ruth?
Yes.
Winchester?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Call us.
That's an easy one, yes.
Thank you.
So motion carries five zero. Second issue for the Dickens Festival. You're okay, sit down. Josh is part of the board and Mike McCann is with us tonight, they're part of the board. The Dickens Festival, it's our 50th anniversary, we're doing some things that we don't normally do. One of the things is we're going to have a 50-foot banana split built one day during the festival, right down the middle of Battle Alley. We are going, it's been floated around before, but it is official. We will have a Scrooge drop this year. For those of you that remember Andy Potter, he was the director of the Dickens Festival. One day, we were having a brainstorm meeting about what could we do to help bring people to the festival? And he said, "We should have a Scrooge drop, you know how they do the New Year's Eve ball drop? And we could drop Scrooge from the water tower." And everybody laughed and everybody envisioned Scrooge flailing and dropping and it was laughed at. At which point, somebody looked and said, "Would you do that?" And I, in my infinite wisdom.
And said, "Yes."
Well, not so easy. I, in my infinite wisdom, or as it turns out, my lack thereof, I said I would do it if Chief McGee would approve it. Because I thought, there's no way that McGee's going to approve that. And when they went to meet Chief McGee, he said, "Yeah, we can do that, we do training off there anyway." So it, that's, that's my lack thereof from an instant wisdom. So this week, I met with both the Village of Holly Fire Department and NACFA. They have a team that specializes in that, Mr. Finkmeyer can probably tell you. Ian Dunbar is on that team. Officer Cook from the Village Fire Department, along with Mr. McKay. And I forget who the fourth one is for the village, but they've got this team, it'll be Jeremy Watson in the bucket. I met with them on Tuesday morning. I said my farewell to our staff. And I went for training. And found myself up in the air at the height of the water tower. And I went up three different times and I came down and I said, "I can do this. So it's going to happen." And I immediately texted Andy Potter, who's now working way up in northern Michigan along the lake. And the minute he saw that, he said, "You're the man, I will be there." And Andy will be there. So we will have a Scrooge drop this year. The third thing is, we are going to have a train for the kids as part of Santa's Village. Groveland Oaks has made a train that they take the kids around the park on. It's made out of those colorful 55-gallon plastic drums and aluminum frame. And it's pulled behind a, an, a two-seat RV. I don't know what they're technically called, but I know a lot of folks around here own one. Rush RV has offered to supply that for us. And then today, we ran into a little glitch. Because we have to be out of the building at Cyclone, we don't have any place to put the thing for the three weekends. So I wanted to ask the board if we could put it in the empty bay at the new Township building. So at the end of Sunday, it would just end up in the bay and wait for the next weekend and then we'll take it back out. Then when we're done, it'll go back to parks, because the only other way to do it is they would have to transport it to the festival, back to Groveland, back to the festival, back to Groveland. So that's my second request, is that we have a place to put that.
No, it's bay's lock, I'm assuming?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep, the bay's locked, they're sitting there empty. It's just to pull it in and circle around and then we'll pull it out and at the end of the last weekend, we'll go back home.
And you'll do that?
Yeah.
Okay, make a motion to approve the use of one of the bays at the new Township office for storage of the Dickens Festival train.
Support?
Support by Clerk Winchester. Any further discussion?
That'd be a big hit with the kids, I can guarantee that.
Yeah, yep, well, somebody saw it this summer while they were out there camping, thought it was cool. I made a phone call to John Noyes, who hooked us up with Jamie Weasel, who is the director for the campground out there. And he said it sounded great. He said, then everybody got excited, we found people to commit to driving it and working the process. And today, he said to me, "Where are you going to park it?" And I went, "Park it? What?" And he said, "Well, if I'm going to have to bring it out to you and come back and get it every week, I'm going to." And he said, "Well, if I'm going to have to bring it out to you and come back and get it every week, I'm going to have to charge you, because I'm going to have to pay people to do that back and forth." And I thought, "Oh, for crying out loud." So, my next reaction was, I called to see if we could use the building at Cyclone, but as soon as they've got it empty, they're going to start doing stuff. So, that wasn't viable. That's when I said, "Well, we got those bays sitting there, it's just for the couple of weekends," so. All right, um, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five-zero. All right, that takes care of the Dickens Festival, I appreciate our board members coming out in support of that. Uh, brings us to the last public comment. If there's anything more for public comment? I see nobody, I do see somebody moving. It's, they have to contemplate, I have to give them a moment for contemplate, we should put in a, a, a public comment contemplation.
Mike McCann, a storage unit five oh one, East Maple Street. I just wanted to say you guys are doing a great job, I appreciate you guys' hard work in coming here up till eight o'clock at night on these, um, evenings and doing the board, uh, work. You're the trustees, we're the beneficiaries, and we appreciate it. I thank you for all your help and effort, uh, trying to keep this thing going and, uh, keep things moving. Thanks, guys.
Okay. Gee, we need more public comment like that. Anyone else for public comment? None appearing, are there any more remarks for the board?
I just want to learn more about how this, uh, drop's going to happen, so. Well, we can talk about that afterwards.
It's a bungee cord.
That's what I'm wondering, is he like rappelling down this water tower?
So, I got to tell you, when, when they hooked me up in the harness and they, and they put me through all the, the safety stuff, you know, and we got going, they, they got me up there and they used the ladder truck, and we did the whole thing. And he said, "Okay, you ready, go up?" And I said, "Yeah, it's the first time, let's just do three feet." And, and I said, "Let me kind of get," and I was a little nervous, I'm not, I'm not going to lie. And they took me up three feet, and I said, "Okay, down, down." I said, "We got to change the harness, because it was too far under my legs, and it was just way uncomfortable." So, we did a little adjustment there, and we, we changed it around, I said, "Okay, do it again," and they did it again, and they said, "Okay, I think we're okay." So, uh, Steve McGee said, "Let's, let's try the fifteen-foot level and see how you do there, because I have some things I have to do to the harness to make all of this work at the same time." So, we did that, I did what I had to do and, and learned what worked better, came back down. We made a little adjustment so that it would make what I have to do a little more feasible. And second time, he said, "You ready, we're going to take you to the rafters." So, they took me up just above the roof of the fire hall, which was about thirty feet. And, and I said, "No, this works pretty good, I'm okay," and I was able to do the function much easier than I did the first time. And we came down, and he says, "Okay, what do you think?" And I said, "Let's go for it." Because when I was up at thirty feet, I was looking at that water tower, and I was thinking, "I can do that." So, the second time, we, and I mentioned, I said, "I got to be honest with you, I wasn't as nervous doing this as I was on the ground before I did it."
Right.
So, I said, "But it's, it's pretty okay." So, they took me up the second time, and my mistake was, you got to keep some information to yourself. I told him I didn't have an issue. So, we went all the way up to the top, and just as I got to, to, all the way up to the top, which was equal with that water tower that you can see off the street, the guy hits the lever, and the ladder goes. And I did a little of this swing stuff in the rough. I, it made me laugh, and I thought, "Yeah, that's my fault, I told her I have an issue." But even that was okay. And, uh, it's going to be fun, but it's going to be over by the water tower, and we're, hopefully, we're going to have a spotlight so that you, you'll see Scrooge come down and.
Which days?
Uh, we haven't, we haven't put that together yet, we're still, we're not quite ready to announce the, the time.
In short, in short, this is George's last seconds festival.
Yeah. And you know, I, I said I would do it if Steve McGee approved it, and he was right there. So, I thought, "Well, my only hope now is when I get home and my wife says, 'You are absolutely not doing that.'" And when I told my wife, she said, "So, I need to insure, so I need to increase the insurance." So, yeah, so it's, it was pretty much a done deal. From the start, it sounds like fun, I think everybody will enjoy it, um, it'll be something that.
I couldn't believe you would do that.
That people, well, I've had a couple of people, you know, ask me if I'm out of my mind, and I said, "That's not the first time I've heard that question either." So, it should be fun, we're looking forward to a great festival. I want to tell you, if you weren't able to be at the gala, um, last Friday night for the Dickens Festival, Pam Krantz showed up, I cannot say enough about that woman. She and Marlo Davidson were both there, they've been involved in this festival for fifty years. Pam Krantz went to her doctor on Wednesday, she has a couple of blood clots in her arm, he wanted to put her in the hospital immediately, and she said, "Nope, I have a couple of parties to go, and I'm not missing them." And she said, "I'll see you on Monday." And she showed up at that festival, we honored her and Marlo Davidson for fifty years. Marlo Davidson is running the sing for this year. And Pam took the microphone, and she talked about the rewards of volunteering and the family she feels a part of in this community for all of her years' work. And I got to be honest with you, I'm not good in those situations, because I get a little misty. And what a wonderful, wonderful person she is, and what a great sense of humor, and her, she just can't do enough. And, and I said, "Marlo, would you like to say anything?" And she took that mic out of my hand, and then she began to advertise the sing and tell people that she needed cookies to be made, and she'd be over here making a list. I, you can't stop these ladies. So, it's just a wonderful, wonderful thing for this community, it brings a lot of people here. And I got to tell you, I've been doing Scrooge for thirteen years, I've been the director for eleven. I got a team of forty to fifty-plus volunteers that make this happen, and nobody gets paid. It's volunteer, a lot of volunteer time all year long in making this happen. And I, I, it's just, it's a wonderful thing for this village, and I'm going to tell you, eleven years ago, one person raised the question, because we have, the weekends are named the Homecoming, and, and they're each titled. And the last weekend is "God bless us everyone." And somebody came to our board that first year and said they thought we should drop that, because it might be offensive. And I turned and I said, "I'm here to tell you, as long as I'm the director, that'll never be dropped." And it ended. Nobody took us to, a couple of people were worried that I was going to have the wrath of whatever come after us. Nobody ever did. What a wonderful, truly wonderful gift we, as a community, give to southeast Michigan, to people from Ontario. We get people from all across the state, from Ohio. And Pam Krantz said one year, they took, they had in their information booth, they were taking a sign-in sheet of people that came. They had people from different country, countries in the world that come to Michigan for family as a tradition at Thanksgiving. She said they had somebody from Brazil, Japan. Do you remember the third one?
Germany, I think it was.
Was it Germany?
Yeah.
But there were three countries on there that come to this festival, and said they do it every year. So, it's just a great time, and, and I've been truly blessed to be a part of it, and a part of these people that make it happen.
Is it still public comment time?
Yes.
Karen said yes.
Okay.
He has to adjourn.
Josh Murphy, one of three Battle Alley. I just wanted to go out and talk, or speak to what you were saying. Uh, my friend owns, or runs the hotel up here in, or, um, Grand Lake, Comfort Inn, I think it is, the one that we support. They get booked up from people all across the country, weeks before Dickens Festival, just for Dickens, and they give them a discount.
Very nice.
So, yep, it, it's a good thing. Well, good, we'll close on a happy note, I want everybody to have a happy Thanksgiving. We will see you back here in December.